Okay, thanks everyone. We are here on April 2nd, 2024 at 11:00 AM for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. If we could all silence cell phones and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Thanks.
It's over the agenda. I think since we started at 11:00, can we go through in the order it's on here? And Tim and Liz, I think, I think the agenda is good as is. We pulled off some things earlier, but I think as posted is good. The one thing just jumping ahead, I know Sarah and I have not had a chance to review the minutes that are on the consent agenda. So when we get to the consent agenda, we'll just do the approval of payroll for now. Sorry about that. And we will, we will catch up on this.
Yeah, pretty clear.
We're trying to catch up on work.
Yeah. So, call for motion to approve the agenda. As posted, there were just the tabling of minutes in the consent agenda.
Same with.
Second, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye, approved with those changes as stated. Community information items and legislative updates. I don't have any information items, so Sarah, let you go ahead with any information items, then we can turn to legislative updates.
Sure, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank Commissioner Marcela for her service. And it has been great being a partner with her and serving also with Fisher Fiedler and Kayla together these last four years. Three and a half, I guess technically, but I think we've made a lot of great challenging improvements to the county as an organization, which in turn improves our ability to set our priorities and serve the community. So, thank you to Commissioner Marcela.
On legislative stuff, I think one, one item is House Bill 241558 on the film. Sorry, can I get the full title, Film Incentive Tax Credit that Adam Ducharme had recommended we support. I read that over and I don't see any reason not to take his recommendation and relay that to our lobby team.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've heard, or had any other discussions.
No, no objections. I've taken that stance.
Okay, so we can keep that support. The, may I jump to the short-term rental one? I think we've had discussions on this before, but this is the, this is the potential bill that would be changing the tax category, or I guess I think category is the right word, of short-term rentals. And I think some of the particular issues or sticking point in discussions around that from stakeholders is what number of days per year would bump you into that higher tax category. And I think, I think for us, you know, some of the feedback we've given previously to the lobby team is that compared to other counties, because we have put in place, thank you CDD, the county, you know, updated policy, and the city has a cap, and both of those caps are at relatively low levels compared to other counties in the state. It's, it's not as big an issue either on housing inventory availability or revenue for us as it is for other counties. So I think we don't have quite as big a dog in that fight.
As well as the variable of just such a fluctuating direct economy and the seasons that that really comes in and out. It's, it's not very consistent, so it adds a different complex layer of how, how to tackle that problem.
Yeah, yeah. And then I think as was captured in our local county regs, I mean, there's this interesting issue of like trying to distinguish between a short-term rental that is like primary owner occupied or local owner run versus not. I think we, we captured that in our regs, but I think that's, that's in there in the state though. And I, I mean, other than needing to address that distinction, you know, I, I don't think, we don't have like draft language for the state bill on that. But I think raising that is something we can convey to the lobby team. And then on that question of like, you know, so the high end is like 180, which is like 50% occupancy, which obviously captures many fewer units depending on your county. But when you start getting up to percent occupancy that's similar to a commercial hotel or motel or lodging, you know, it seems, it seems more clear at close to 180 number that you deserve to be in a different category than someone at 30. So again, I don't think we have like a number that we've analyzed and I'll, I'll ask for a comment in a second, but I, to me, like, I could, I, I don't think we have like a clear number that we think is perfect for us. And at least for me, I would, I would rather start high at like something closer to 180 and you'll have much less political opposition in the state legislation if you do it that way. And you can see how that lands. I don't think setting it at like 30 and jumping right up into some higher tax bracket, that, that seems too low. So I don't know, Sarah, if you have any thoughts on that?
No, I think so. Good job sending that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's just piggybacking, I think, kind of aligning with what Sarah said. You know, our visitation, it doesn't really hit a lot of those occupancy, you know, 180 days would, we just don't hit those thresholds because our visitation numbers wouldn't, you know, exceed 180 days or even come close to it typically with short-term rentals. They're just not seeing that kind of occupancy rates. So a lot of it doesn't, any of the numbers don't really, that have been suggested, they don't typically really kind of align with what we see currently in, in our historic occupancy rates.
Yeah. Are you, I don't know how closely you've been tracking some of the state discussions. Are you aware of where, of any proposals on the table for how to distinguish between sort of primary owner occupied or local owner occupied or ownership of smaller number of units versus somewhat, against someone that's sort of more clearly in an investment, commercial situation?
Right, well, I do think, whereas I don't think that I, I know exactly how it's being suggested to be defined, although I think that are what we're doing locally with the way that, in which we're defining it, I think, has a certain protection. And again, if we're not even getting close to those visitation numbers, I think those two together, I think, are probably keeping us kind of out of some of those discussions then.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're all on the same page and I think that's consistent with what I sent back to the legislative team, so. And then CC, I'll, I'll add you to the feedback I just wrote this morning to the lobby team to see if you have any clarifications or other, yeah, corrections. So I think, I need just a time, I might move on and we'll, we'll keep working on feedback to the lobby team with other bills. There's a lot going on because the legislative session heats up. But I think if you're okay, we can move on to public comment for items not on the agenda. I'm seeing none. Any hands raised on the Zoom? I'm seeing none. So we'll move on to agenda item number one, which is discussion and consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation on Land Use File 2404, an application for a major subdivision sketch plan located at 5585 Highway 82, Twin Lakes, Colorado 81251. And this is following on from a joint Planning Commission, BSCC public hearing held on March 25th, 2024. So I think I'll turn it over to you and present this.
Thank you so much. So I know that we had sent over the deliberation of the Planning Commission to the board so that you could see it in real time and how the eventual statement of motion that I'll provide you was created. So there were a couple extra conditions placed on the list of conditions provided by staff. And largely, the most significant concern, or one of the most significant concerns, is just the manner in which the development is coming before the county for decision. Not having Angel View 1 finalized is of a concern. And so the Planning Commission very much wanted to make sure that Angel View 2 is not progressing basically out of order, understanding of the integral transportation connection aspect and the unknowns with CDOT at this point. The Planning Commission felt strongly that they wanted to make sure that it was articulated within the additional conditions that we're going to provide you in the statement of motion. And I think that was, you know, really the kind of overarching message within the deliberation, that there's just a concern about kind of how this development is being proposed to the county and it's feeling a bit out of order in the way. I think there was also a concern that Parcel B is, is very speculative and, you know, consideration of some of the presentation, you know, considers, was in consideration of things that are, are just ideas at this point. And so the Planning Commission definitely wanted to identify and really consider that this is a major subdivision application and those future actions on Parcel B are still very unknown at this point. And so, you know, I think it was important that they, you know, kind of communicate that out in, you know, the perception could be, within public perception could be, that those Parcel B is in a, a more ready proposal format than it truly is. And so they really wanted to make sure that the focus is on that this is a major subdivision application and that adjacent use may or may not ever come to fruition. And so, and that's memorialized in the second condition that I'm going to provide about emergency access. So, you know, it is appropriate to consider what's going to happen or what is happening on adjacent parcels. So it wasn't completely out of, or inappropriate to have those suggestions. It is inappropriate however to have that the basis of any decision-making on, on this parcel. So I think that kind of summarizes, you know, some of the thoughts of the Planning Commission. And so they have, we have the following statement of motion that was made on March 25th at the joint public hearing. The Planning Commission unanimously approved an amended motion for conditional improvement with five members in favor. The original motion was made by Steve Stevens and seconded by Howard Tritt. The Planning Commission recommends conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioner of File Number 2404, the Angel View 2 Major Subdivision Sketch Plan located on Highway 82 east of the Village of Twin Lakes and adjacent to Angel View 1 containing 44.48 acres with the following conditions. Number one, comments from the county engineer, including the sketch plan approval comments and the plan sheet redlines shall be addressed in addition to the LDC preliminary plan supplemental requirements. Number two, a solution or solutions to the items discussed in the staff report regarding access to Highway 82 shall be arrived at with CDOT prior to applying for preliminary plan. Number three, a definition of area of influence shall clarify the allowed uses of the lots' private open space. Building envelope would be preferable. Open space calculations may need to be reconsidered. Number four, all areas of influence shall comply with the setback requirements of the RC or recreational zone district. Number five, a topographic map at an appropriate contour interval shall be submitted with the preliminary plan. Number six, the applicant shall either seek a variance for the shared driveway situation, which creates a code conflict regarding easements in Section 6.2.3B5, or reconsider proposing three home sites on a single driveway. This variance will be determined by Public Works, given it is a roadway standard and not a zoning concern. And number seven, all statements made by the applicant in his application and in hearing are considered as conditions of approval unless modified by other conditions of approval and further finding the positive findings of the approval criteria of Section 3.16.3H as presented in the body of the staff report. Following deliberation on the motion, the following amended motion was made by Joey Edwards, seconded by Howard Tritt and unanimously approved by roll call vote of all five, five members present. There is an amendment to File Number, to the motion for File Number 2404, Angel View 2 Major Subdivision Sketch Plan. An eighth condition will be, shall be added and shall read, "Due to the integral nature of the development, final plat for Angel View 1 must be complete before preliminary approval of Angel View 2." A ninth condition shall be added and shall read, "The emergency access plotted on Parcel B shall be included in the subdivision improvement agreement as part of final plat."
Happy to answer any questions about the statement of motion or any other.
I can, I can start and just say, I, I did, I listened to the full recording and yeah, I agreed. Really appreciate the Planning Commission's discussion and those two areas you highlighted. You know, the sort of phasing of the, of Angel View 1 and then Angel View 2, A and B, just in general, and then particularly with regards to the CDOT and emergency access, you know, inter, uh, interconnect. So for me, I'm happy with all the planning commissioners brought forward. Sarah, I don't know if you want to add more?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that too and I just want to, as the deliberation went on, I think I understand that Angel View 2 is a contingent on the execution of Angel View 1 final and SIA. But Angel View, and then Angel View 2 is also a contingent on that plating or like some planning of Parcel B. So in essence, we may have the three, we may have three applications in some level of review submitted at some time and that's, that's the expectation, right?
Right. Parcel B is, is a real unknown. I mean, there's, there's an idea out there about, you know, with the, that it would be a mixed parcel. But for right now, the emergency access is an easement versus, you know, requirement of, but we do want to capture that as an improvement that is essential to the development of Angel View 2.
Yeah, okay. I, I have a couple smaller questions. The, I don't think it was really discussed, that, that like the contribution of the land and the area to the county. I understand that PROS kind of declined that, you know, offer. And, and I wanted to clarify whether or not the Colorado Forteeners Foundation was going to be the recipient of that area and to, to manage that or if that was still kind of up in the air and I just didn't want to memorialize it as it would be. I think in the staff report, it was maybe highlighted most.
Right. And so conversations with Adam Bay, what, you know, that, that, at the point that we talked about it, the staff report creation, was that there was, there were still some unknown elements about it, but certainly wanted to be very mindful about what the liability and maintenance aspect of that would be. In, in the application, it was suggested as a county dedication. But what we heard through the public hearing process and the Colorado, or the Continental Divide Coalition and also the Trail, Colorado Trail representative as well, is that it appears there has been more discussion about them taking on that dedication and overseeing the maintenance and liability of the, of the parcel. And so we'll have that, that coming forward at preliminary. But you're, you're absolutely right with the caveat that Adam Bay, at the right of the staff report, just suggested that certainly weren't ready to suggest that, that a county dedication would be appropriate, that there needed to be a further vetting of that. But it does sound like there's good progress by the, the two groups to look at taking on that dedication of the parcel and not just the, the trail itself.
Great, thank you. And then lastly, the item number six, the applicant will either seek a variance for the shared driveway situation or reconsider. I, I mean, Michael's here, I don't know if, yes, it's still that conversation, but I might prefer encouraging more highly that they simply realign the driveways rather than seeking the variance. And I don't know if Public Works Director has any comments on like how that, or you on how that, those conversations typically go and how challenging that might be.
Absolutely. I think, I think just to start with is that, you know, we have, the LDC is written to allow Public Works to grant variances from roadway standards. We already have, and I think it's included, I think it was included in the staff report, some of our engineering, the SEH's comments and thoughts from an engineering standpoint about things that need to be in consideration of that variance. And so I would suggest that, you know, we would provide access and I know that Michael has his own access to engineering input on looking at it and also considering topography, the other challenges that they may have in why the design is in the manner that it is. But I think that, you know, we would provide Michael with all of the supportive comments that we have from engineering to help make that decision-making and then allow him, you know, but, but certainly that may be the outcome is that, you know, he may not be able to be supportive of that. But we just wanted to create the space to, to figure out what is the best outcome of that.
Yeah, well, I think, I think the, I mean, there's, there's one physically able and engineered, able to be engineered in the locations proposed or in alternate locations. But I think, I just want to emphasize again, there's always lingering neighborly issues and this might be a different kind of community, but there is always an issue with subdividing lots and even in, you know, if we're talking about 10 feet of a, of a parcel or 10 acres. There's always some issue that staff needs to, you know, you get a complaint and you get, and I see heads nodding. Yes, this is an issue. So I just want to emphasize that the ideal scenario would be not to be, have that as part of the, the next phase of the engineering.
Absolutely. I think that, you know, that can be taken into the decision-making. I'm sure Michael will, you know, get into it. I mean, I don't want to speak for it.
Support, support you both continuing to, you know, send the message you need to when you, when you have the time and get into those conversations.
I'm pretty much up to the side to the speed of the highway.
Yeah.
Even though it is allowed, it goes to have to share four driveways before it becomes a road where you have to pay to go. Yeah, I'd have to see what obstacles could be in the way.
Yeah, okay. So I don't, I don't have, I don't have anything else on it? Or any changes? I, I think you guys talked about the, and you felt good about like the, the final pet being completed or executed. And I think with all the conversations that happened in the hearings, that is pretty clear. Your, your expectations are clear, so. I will make a motion to approve File 2404. The Angel View, Angel View 2 Major Subdivision Sketch Plan.
Based on the condition?
Based on, do I have to, based on the conditions read, the nine conditions read and the recommendation by the Planning Commission.
Is that good? Okay, I'll second.
I have nothing else.
Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. So the statement of motion as, for File 2404, as read here and presented by the Planning Commission is approved. Okay. Thanks everyone for the work on that.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number two, discussion and consideration, adoption of Resolution 2024-10, Lake County Leadership Policies. I think my recommendation on this is that we have a brief discussion, but this is our, our first sort of public presentation of this, so. And there's a lot, there's a lot of good stuff in there, but a lot of stuff in there. So I don't think we'll be taking a vote on it today, but can start a discussion and provide sort of edits in discussion going forward to bring up maybe at our next full meeting or we can consider whether we want to on a work session to talk about it more.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, a work's 30, 45 minutes of a work session can be worthwhile in between before the next meeting. But yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that as well.
Great. So yeah, I, I have a couple sort of initial thoughts just to sort of flag items that I think need more clarity. And first of all, I say, I think this is great. I mean, in the last couple of years, we have moved to having a county manager and increasing staff capacity in, and functions under your sort of immediate office, but I'd say sort of like core functions of finance, HR. We also have beefed up capacity in the county attorney's office. So I think, you know, it's good just to get in a written document, you know, how that new structure works and sort of whose, whose job is what and how everyone is supposed to interact. So I think for me, just a couple of things caught my eye to start off. One is maybe a minor one, at, at the tail end, it's, it's suggested review every two years. I would suggest that there's just an annual review of this. You know, and somewhere in the same way that we do at least annual reviews, sort of like mid-year reviews of, of departments and AIP scrubs. So I think especially if, if it's going to be a new document, sort of revisiting it more frequently makes sense. I think, again, I, I haven't spent as much time with it as I thought. I thought we could beef up sort of a little bit in here about how a lot of direction is going to come through our, the, the budget process and some of the mid-year reviews that we do. I think sort of calling those out more as like tools that we use. I don't know, like getting into the AIPs and the AIP scrubs is too much detail and locking in something. I, I don't know if that's too much detail in, in, in this level.
I feel like there's some good way to capture the different categories or ways in which we have the communication and the organization. So I don't know whether it's really outlining that to like, yeah, in great detail, but including it along with the plans on the page and the scrubs. And maybe that just offers kind of a better context of the opportunities and the expectations of how we
Yeah.
develop priorities and, yeah.
Okay, yeah, then, yeah, yeah, then I, then I think let's, let's try to actually put in like our timetable of AIP and department, you know, mid-year reviews. And, you know, obviously the OCCs can adjust that, you know, as it goes forward. But I think those are tools. But I think those are tools we're using to provide, you know, guidance and, and feedback, so. And then, and then I think for me, like the third category is I think the, the delineation between the county manager and commissioners. I think there's some things that are missing in there where commissioners do kind of maybe work individually on issues. For example, we have a number of one-on-one meetings, say with CPD, to discuss upcoming files in an appropriate way, you know, at, at, at that preliminary staff level. We do have one-on-one meetings with some other departments, you know, that, that I think are appropriate and known. We don't make decisions in those, but I think those are helpful for departments to sort of get the sense of the room as they're working on, on emerging issues. I think there, there are places where one commissioner is the board rep to, I mean, we kept that in the annual resolution, but I think it might be good to call out here that, you know, at times individual commissioners are going to be acting in, like, they're going to be representing the B OCC and, you know, but they're going to be there alone. And I think sometimes that also happens, that certainly happens externally, like with C dot IMTPR and the whole list of things in our annual resolution. But I think there are other situations like where one commissioner might be more the lead on some legislative topics. And it's kind of, I mean, it's almost a quasi-staff role where you need, as one commissioner, you need to be careful not to get too far out ahead of what you think the B OCC guidance is. And then similarly, I think internally, there's some internal projects where commissioners are listed on AIP teams. I think we need to capture that kind of situation where an individual commissioner is kind of working with staff in some capacity that's a little different than, it's not the B OCC in the room on the team. But, yeah, so I think those were notes that I had, can't read them. Yeah, the annual review that we talked about. So just some initial feedback from me to keep thinking about before the, the work session time. And Sarah, all yours to add more.
I don't have anything to add right now, no. I think those are great things to go back through and think about.
Actually, maybe if I got one other thing, I think for the county attorney's office, it might be good. I, I think we have some, like on the county manager side and like the budget, I think we have developed some clear sort of like AIP tools and sort of, I think it might be good to just talk about whether we want to put anything in here about, you know, of the, who knows how long the list is, of things that the county attorney's office is working on. Do we want to call out a specific like review of those or, you know, I mean, so we can provide good prioritization or like, oh no, like, I, I don't care about that anymore. Or like, oh man, that's a screening priority, let's bump that up on the list or some indication of how much time we are expecting to be allocated to different things. I don't, I don't know, just, that, that was a little bit vague, but I think it might be good to think about calling out like a little bit more clarity on sort of how we give direction to the capacity, you know, the direction and interim guidance, you know, to the capacity that we now have in the county attorney's office. So that we're all on the same page.
Just something, I mean, if, if you're asking for like regular reporting on pending matters, you might be able to do that, but we have to be cautious because a lot of this stuff ends up being subject to attorney-client curriculums. It wouldn't be something subject to public review.
Yeah.
And it, it's just kind of a delicate balance.
Well, yeah, so maybe you could think about the right way to do that, to, yeah, protect things that are confidential, like, yeah, so suggest what the right place is for that discussion to happen, whether it's in the county ops or maybe we need to set up this, a sort of, something like county ops, but yeah. So welcome your thoughts on that for the work session. We don't have anything scheduled in the work session for next week.
For the afternoon morning morning.
For the afternoon session, yeah.
Oh, the mornings too. I thought it was the other way around, okay.
It was, but we had an opening in the morning one, so clarify shifts to that. You'll also have Dana Foley with the five-year CTI SI loss. So the 1:00 PM is open at the moment.
Is that, is that too soon or may as well just keep working on it, okay?
It'd be a good orientation piece for the, for the new commissioner as well.
Oh, yeah. That's all I had for now on that agenda item.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that afternoon, I just, there was something that out, there was something that I was trying to schedule in the morning because it was open. So I didn't know that that had been changed. We'll figure out what that would be. But what are we telling the plan for the one of that? Great, I'm good to move on if you'd like to.
Uh, sounds good, okay. Agenda item three is discussion and consideration of Lake County School District expedited land transfer ownership to Lake County to be an applicant for the voluntary cleanup program through CDPHE. I wanted to say before turning it over to Jackie, I, I do sit on the school board, so I don't think I need, since it's just a discussion and guidance, I don't think I need to recuse myself or abstain from this. And we've talked about that with the county attorney. But if, please, if I start to step over a line and I can also, and, and will if necessary, I can refuse myself on the school board side of any vote on the matter if there seems to be a conflict. So that I'll turn it over to Jackie.
Okay, so as you already know, we've encountered some issues with the sites in terms of delineation. I put in your packet just some language that came out of the Phase One and Phase Two that EPA rendered for the property. We had the IGA between the BSC, the school district and the housing authority transferring the property once the infrastructure for water and sewer was put in place. We now realize after conversations, mostly with community builders, Angie Martel, and also with the EPA and with the APHE. We thought there might be a grant opportunity to pursue cleanup, but we don't have time for that because we have this very stringent deadline with DOLA to spend the funding for the infrastructure this year is, is our intent with an absolute deadline of next year, April. And so we're pursuing voluntary cleanup through the Brown Fields Grant Program. The reason we're pursuing this is this will give us, at the end of it, a no-action determination letter, which will allow us to work without accomplice to transfer the property to the ultimate owners. And this is super important component of it. And because the county applied for the DOLA grant, the county needs to be the applicant for this program because they also have to be, be on our site. And so I respectfully request that you, as the board of county commissioners, approve expediting the transfer of the property and give staff and school district and county attorneys a direction to make that happen as soon as possible. I am, I met with the school district last week and will meet again with them asking for a decision on Monday, April 8.
I had a question on this, do, do we actually need to vote on an approval? Because it's really, but that, I mean, it's the school board side that needs to vote. This is more just like guidance consensus of the board, that this is an appropriate step given the work we're already working on?
Yeah, I think we'll need to tee up a purchase contract as part of it, but that's why this is administrative at this phase, it'd just be all to approve us proceeding with putting that together and bringing it back to the board and to the school board for approval so we can get that done as soon as possible. And the IGA lays out kind of the framework for that anyway.
I'll move to acknowledge and approve the expediting of the transfer of the property and encourage the school district to consider such, as well as giving authority to staff to move forward in drafting appropriate documents to do so.
I'll second. And no further discussion?
Can we add an application for the voluntary cleanup so that we cover this one?
Okay, I'll make a separate motion on that one.
Okay. Well, we have that motion on the floor. Sorry, I'm a little weak on my procedures, do, can we call for a amendment?
We can amend, yeah, we can amend now if you want to, since it's, if you want to do a friendly amendment to your motion to include Jackie's request to the county fund if you want.
You can't, I'm just, can I just do a separate one?
Sure.
Okay. I'll, I'll vote aye. Are you calling for a vote? Sorry.
I thought that, I thought we would get the second motion on the table, approve that because it amends the first one and then we would vote.
I don't want to, I wasn't gonna amend the first one.
She wants to do a separate.
Just do a separate, a completely separate motion.
Okay.
Should, should the school district approve the transfer?
Gotcha, okay.
Then we would?
Excellent.
Do that?
So I will also vote aye on the amendment on the table. That first, or sorry, on the motion on the table, that first motion that Commissioner Much reported is approved.
And I'll make a motion that we approve moving forward with the voluntary cleanup program application if the result of the school board decision is to transfer the property to the county.
Great, I'll second.
And I have nothing further.
No further from you, so call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye, so that second motion passes as well. Great, okay. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number four, discussion and consideration of a fiscal sponsor fund agreement with Lake County Community Fund and Get Outdoors led by. So led by Adam Bay, but Brian.
Yeah, thank you all. We're basically seeking to renew our annual fiscal sponsor agreements with the Lake County Community Fund, which allows us to pursue grant funding outside of the, some of the limitations that we have with the county. And you're just, you've done this for a couple of years and we're just seeking to renew it this year. And due to our integration, we just brought it over to the B OCC so that you all can be the ultimate approval.
Okay, so besides that, sort of administrative changes, there's no, there's no substantive change? I mean, it's just pretty, yeah, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's just our usual annual agreement.
Great.
I'll, I'll move to approve the fiscal sponsor fund agreement with Lake County Community Fund and Get Outdoors Leadville authorizing staff to sign that agreement.
Okay, I'll second, and I have no further questions or amendments. Great, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, the fiscal sponsor fund agreement is approved. Thank you. Agenda item number five, discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution 2411, grant application for the Department of Local Affairs or DOLA, Division of Housing, funds for the Lake County Wraparound Housing Navigator and Homelessness Supportive Services Project led by Gloria.
Yes, so we are seeking a $50,000 grant available for homelessness prevention services. And initially I understood that we would be able to submit the, for the $50,000 for case management, so the Housing Navigator decision. It turns out that part of that funding should be utilized for rent assistance, which is okay, we can still move forward with that. And so it would be broken down, $30,000 would actually go to rent assistance and $20,000 for the Housing Navigator decision. We are confident that we will have matching funding for the Housing Navigator decision through the Youth Head Demonstration Project, which we submitted as well. And my understanding is, is moving on well and we will know in May for both of these if we get approved.
Okay.
Great, no questions for me?
No for me.
All right, I'll move to approve the resolution 24-11, the grant application for the Department of Local Affairs, Division of Housing, funds for the Lake County Wraparound Housing Navigator and Homelessness Supportive Services Project.
Great, I'll second, and no questions for me?
Nothing further?
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, 2024-11, the grant application for DOLA for Division of Housing Funds is approved.
Thank you, Laura.
Agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of a letter of intent to end the lease with Delog, Muncher Landed Financial Services Incorporated, the supplier of the county's printing stations, and engage with a purchase order with Peak Printing Solutions. Tom or Chris?
Essentially, this is just the, what we're doing is in the past, the county has leased new equipment with Peak Printing Solutions kind of being the facilitator, if you will, but our contracts have been directly with these financing companies. And what they proposed, starting last year, were some earnest terms that really didn't fit within our structure or the framework that's a lot of the Colorado law. So Tom, and I think it was himself too, looked for an alternative option and Peak Printing Solutions has come forward with this PO that I understand will allow us to rent directly through them without having to go through the financing option thing. It will be refurbished equipment, but it does include maintenance, as I understand.
It does.
Yeah.
So the 548 is a monthly fee and then additional 300 and some change for maintenance to some of those items that includes tech coming out, but also toller and such.
Yeah.
But it avoids getting locked into the long, those weird long-term leasing agreements.
Weird, yeah, weird long-term financing agreement. Plus now we'll have everything under one PO versus individual ones with different departments and stuff like that.
Gotcha.
And Tom, I don't know, will she like that?
This is him, most of it is actually. I just kind of surveyed the sites and, and looked it over to see if it fit our needs. But I think it would be a great opportunity for us to, a cheaper plan than what we were on before and it allows us to circumvent this third party.
Yeah, cool.
Great, no questions for me?
No for me.
I'll move to approve the letter of intent to end the lease with, how do you, how do you pronounce it? Delight, Delog?
They say D L L.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go with that.
With D L L, Financial Services Incorporated, who is the supplier of the county's printing solutions. And for us to engage with a purchase order with Peak's, Peak Printing Solutions.
I'll second, and no questions for me?
Nothing for me.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, the new purchase order is approved.
Great, thank you so much. Cleaning that up.
Thanks. Agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Everhart and Associates for strategic planning, financial management, system development, and emergetics training.
Sure, so this is a new PSA with Everhart Associates, or Dallas as we knew you have known him as. So he's been helpful with introducing us to the STRATA process and helping strategic planning for departments and the board of county commissioners. And then the big help with the emergetics training. So we are, have a goal of all new staff are, you know, when they're onboarded and then it's within their first quarter doing the emergetics training so they can break down silos further within the organization. You know, learn about team building, listening, how to engage in a professional setting. So this is just a, a new PSA with him for not to exceed amount of $72,500.
No questions for me?
Yeah, one for me.
Well, I would like to comment on this. Is that okay? The last two years, this vendor has been paid $239,000 without a signed PLSA or a signed contract. And now you're wanting to do another $72,000. This violates your procurement policy of going out to bid for the, this is not an unusual service he provides, I think management company could do this. I think you should reconsider this and go out to bid for.
Because of that dollar amount? And I'm not questioning this.
Oh, the dollar amount for procurement is $20,000.
Yeah, no, I was just clarifying that it was the dollar amount that sort of triggered, and yeah.
So for what's now are, for the previous two years of $239,000 and now you're adding another $72,000 on top of that.
I do appreciate that with the amount of investment that Dallas had. Um, I do appreciate that with the amount of investment that Dallas has given us, though, I do think that there's some, uh, I don't know if we need to make a formal justification for sole sourcing that with him for that, but, um, I mean, I, I, that investment in our staff has definitely returned dividends in retention as well as attraction of, um, um, recruiting folks. Um, so I, I don't have a problem with our ongoing, um, engagement and the intent of, um, not only improving retention and recruitment, but, um, improving our financial and our budgeting process has been incredible. Um, um, so I, I think that support across those various, um, uh, focuses has been pretty important for us. Um. Chris, do, sorry?
Well, I was gonna say, I, I agree with the value of the services. I was gonna suggest or, or maybe ask if it's, you know, on the timing of this, I wonder if we could circle back with the county attorney offline and just sort of, I, or I don't know if we need to. I don't have memorized the procurement policies and what the exceptions are for u- unique services or whatever, I, I know the phrase. Um, but maybe we could just see if we wanna, like, craft like a better justification for that or discuss, you know, that policy and I, I think we could do a, we could schedule a special meeting to approve this once we have had that discussion. Just wasn't prepared for that and that, that's why it's good to raise it. So that, that would be my proposal, unless there's some, like, screening urgency to get this done today versus like Friday or Monday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, and, and I'll just say that, um, I think Dallas's engagement was the B C and B T. Said we weren't aware until now that there wasn't a contract with them.
Hmm.
Um, and so this kind of just advances, tries to bring it into the standard process. But I can certainly work with, um, team up a, a sole source justification when we look at that to, to ensure that it is appropriate to do that. Or you could put it out to bid and there is, you can always go through that process as well and see who else applies and, you know, money's not the only factor here, since, as Commissioner Much just mentioned, the, the services that have been provided or you're allowed to consider that as well.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, I, Tracy, I appreciate the point, we shouldn't be cavalier with our own policies. So I, I, I would prefer to take a couple of days.
Sure.
To, to do a good review and not rush it.
Yeah, sure, yeah, and, and I do, yeah, I would, I would, I, I mean, I don't, I don't, we've, we've talked at the beginning of the year too or the end of last year, going out for other, you know, executive coaching things and maybe narrowing. But as, as we gain employees and engagement in these different processes that we have put in place, like, is it appropriate to have a different set of expertise or someone in addition to or besides Dallas doing some of these things? So we've talked about that, um, and I, I would just, I have no problem, um, looking at that, I think for the general, like, completion, maybe through this board's tenure, I would like to retain, uh, Everheart and Associates, at least throughout the end of the year. Um, and then leave it up to, and we get another vote from staff in the, in the room. They would like that support as well, I think it's important, um, those relationships and, uh, yeah, the, the systems that we've been trying to build to have that consistent support, so. Um, we'll see what we come up with for the conversation, but.
Yeah.
I, I hope that we're not going to overturn, um, all of that. Thank you. So table this to, uh, either if we have to.
Anything, I think, um, next, classes in May or something, so you can probably even, it, I mean, we can figure out if we need to do a special meeting or it might, could be on the next regular as well.
That timing's okay, that avoids, yeah, avoids extra admin work to schedule.
Sure.
Cool, that, that makes sense. Um, okay. Uh, agenda item number eight, discussion and consideration of an amendment to the P S A with total surveys. We're surveying services at C R Eleven Bridge and the S N L subdivision. Michael?
Yeah, so this is, um, just to add an additional scope of work to the P S A that we already have in place. Um, first one is on County Road Eleven Bridge is to help identify county property lines with the neighbors to see if we can fit the bridge in. We're also working on some other things like creating a one lane in the existing road and being able to build one side of the bridge and then come back and go, we'll take, remove what we have to put in and we have to take the whole crossing out to begin with. So we'll put colors back in to create one lane to keep going in the same location possibly. Um, the engineers are looking at that option right now. Um, but we do need to know property lines to make sure where we're at with it and that was not in the original P S A. And then the second addition is to, um, do a survey to do lot consolidation on, um, Hut Fin Park. But right now, um, all of the existing S N L subdivisions still exist there. Um, roads and lots of locks, so we just want it consolidated to just one park.
Okay. Was there, were there any other sites that we wanted to add to that, like?
Not at this time, I mean, we're already doing County Road Five A under this and we're doing County Road Four and that would be just probably the next two years.
Okay.
But we have to look at the other two cup site.
All right.
But I think, or, or.
Okay.
And how the S N L subdivision, can you remind me how far, like, does that go up to include, like, the land the senior center's on? Or what, what's the boundary?
Yeah, goes the senior center is part of that.
Yeah, okay.
All the way to the dog park.
Okay.
All the way to Fourth Street, and I think there's lots on the other side of Fourth Street.
Hmm.
On like South Side of Fourth Street and then all the way to lighter.
Yeah, so that, so, okay, so the whole, I think, that's what I understood, you asking, like, do we, like, are we doing the whole hut fin?
Yeah, for maybe.
Complex.
Consolidated lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right. Um, I'll move to approve the amendment to the P S A with total surveys, uh, incorporated for surveying services at County Road Eleven Bridge and the S N L subdivision.
Okay, I'll second, and no further questions for me?
Nothing for me either.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so the P S A with total surveys is approved? Thanks.
Awesome, thank you.
Good to keep, yeah, good to keep cleaning things up.
Yeah.
Um, agenda item number nine, discussion and consideration of a P S A with virtual LLC for graphic design work. Liz?
So I'm really excited, we've already worked with Brit Hold to get our seal re-rendered, now we have that high resolution image that we can manipulate. And we'd like to, um, engage with a new set of work, helping with the brand identity of the county. So we are looking for, um, kind of a menu of design work that's gonna include letterhead, email signatures, business cards, some templates for presentations, as well as some Canva templates that are branded, so anyone in the county can use those as we build, um, marketing materials for our community. Compared with that, um, this will kind of be the trial run of R W C A G guideline compliance, right? Because those are graphic images, and so getting in all of that alt text, and so it also behooves that project, um, getting a standardized signature that we know meets that compliance.
Cost and, can I, um, what is Canva?
Canva is, um, a user-friendly graphic design software that even you could create something with.
Like PowerPoint presentations and other?
Yeah, so, um, the social media graphics that Sarah's been using, those are largely built on Canva. And so having that tool with a little bit of visual vocabulary, um, really allows other creators to create within our brand, so it's gonna be logged, we'll have our colors in there, we'll have our fonts in there, we'll have our seal in there, but it's not so, what I make looks really different than Stephanie's, that looks really different than Julia's, so you can't tell who the, um, content creator is. So we're looking for about two or three different lockups right now for Canva, we think that's a really good start to have a little bit of variety, but I'm not have all sixty-four colors of the yellow box.
So on Canva, there's an option to add branding sections, so you can lock in certain colors, which is used within an organization.
Oh, gotcha, so there's like a limited palette, so you don't go.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's like the paint of Photoshop, so it's like a really condensed, um, ecosystem for graphic design.
Is it, is it gonna include pink bunnies?
Uh, yes. I'm gonna make like a pile of show or something, so there's like, uh, the legend of the buddy man continues, the little green man.
The next iteration, the yellow man.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll stop it there. Okay, uh, good.
Um, I'll, let's see.
And it's definitely a Swiss word, this is a budgeted expense, Sarah planned for this and kind of her package for twenty twenty-four in communications.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move to approve the P S A with birth and, uh, LLC for graphic design work.
I'll second, and no further questions for me?
Nothing for me either.
Call for a motion?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, um, aye, uh, P S A with virtual LLC is approved. I have a sequence there, okay, thanks. Um, agenda item number ten, discussion and consideration of the Civic Plus renewal, scope of work to include Audio I in the content management system. Tom?
This is just an annual renewal of our agreement subscription with Civic Plus as our C M S P O.
Okay, um, and again, can I ask what, what, remind me what Audio I is?
Um, it's an accessibility tool, uh, it's the little blue guy at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
To meet statute requirements?
Yeah, okay, thanks. That's good for me.
Okay, I'll move to approve the Civic Plus renewal scope of work to include Audio I and the content management system.
Great, I'll second, and no further questions?
Nothing further for me.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, um, the Civic Plus renewal, uh, is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item eleven, discussion and consideration of subscription renewal with Patagonia Health for medical records. Uh, Julia?
Yes, so Patagonia is our E H R, our charting system.
Yeah.
We are actually set up an auto renewal with them, but we sent the contract to the attorney team just to have them look them over and see if they wanted to make any provisions, um, and make sure the wording still looked okay. We're not really looking to do any big changes at this time, they're always pushing for us to sign a five-year contract, but we're sticking with our.
One-year auto renewal, this, this is the typical scenario of each year, they send us their basic version and each year we send them back the markup we did the year before. To say, no, those are the change stuff, so that's, I think we're waiting to go back on those.
Yeah, and the vendors have been great, yeah.
So, so would you like approval pending final legal review?
Okay, please. Okay, I'll move to approve the renewal of Patagonia Health for medical records in public health. Um, department pending final legal review.
I'll second.
Nothing further for me.
For me, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, that is approved with, uh, Patagonia Health, uh, pending legal review, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then as we said, and again, Tracy, sorry.
No, no, sorry.
Uh, on, uh.
Oh, for, well, choke.
Yeah, um, sorry, we did not get, uh, to the minutes on the consent agenda, but we can vote on the approval of the March twenty-second payroll.
Yep, I'll move to approve the consent agenda, including, uh, only the March twenty-second, June twenty-four payroll.
I'll second.
Nothing further for me.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so that is approved. And we are done and we can adjourn.
Yes.
Thanks.